Good evening, I'd like to welcome everyone to the school board meeting for January the 21st. First call, business called order, and then pledge allegiance by Ms. Tiffany Johnson.
Pledge of Allegiance.
The flag of the United States of America and the Supreme Republic of Massachusetts, one nation, one God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. All right, please join me in a moment of silence, please. All right. Approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion?
Move, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Estes, second. Ms. Bratton, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Approval consent agenda. Have a motion.
So moved.
Sharp. Ms. Johnson, second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Number six, visitors. First visitor will be Mr. Michael Harris. He's not here, so. You would please state your name and address, and you have three minutes, sir.
Will Severn, 3127 St. John's Drive. Good evening, my name is Will Severn, and I am the executive director and founder of the Student Representative Initiative. While we would have liked for more people to join us tonight, we chose to send only one representative in the interest of complying with CDC guidelines and in an effort to limit the spread of the coronavirus. Members of the Board, I am standing here because Rutherford County Schools is facing a dire situation that poses a threat to its well-being and efficacy. Many students have lost faith in the ability of this school board to make decisions that are in the best interests of students and teachers, and frankly, such a sentiment is understandable. Accountant for student population, the positive cases in our schools, when compared with that from our Free Spur City Schools, were on average in the weeks before Christmas break, 251% higher. And the raw data comparison between Rutherford County Schools and Metro Nashville Schools show that, without accounting for student population, two weeks before Christmas breaks, we had nine times the number of COVID cases amongst students, despite the fact that their enrollment is almost twice that of this district. Health officials spent months warning us about a drastic surge in cases after the Thanksgiving and Christmas holidays. This board only called for a contingency plan to be drawn up on December 17th, after it was already necessary to move every school in the district to distance learning, resulting in a plan that was not perfect, but it would have been better than nothing. In the words of Vice Chairman Johnson, quote, "We cannot continue down the same path we're going." However, not a single member of this board even raised the motion to vote on the plan. Instead, this board opted to continue implementing the same system which has led to a disproportionately high number of cases, and tragically, deaths. Instead, this board, in spite of official guidelines from the White House Coronavirus Task Force, guidelines that said that Tennessee was facing, quote, "unyielding spread," guidelines that recommended, quote, "uniform implementation of effective face masking and strict physical distancing," chose to send students and teachers back to classes where some desks are separated by less than two feet. Is it any wonder, then, that students feel as though you are not looking out for them? Perhaps the most disheartening reaction came from a classmate of mine just over a week ago. When the subject of petition arose, I asked him if they would be willing to sign it, their response was, "But it wouldn't change anything, that it wouldn't matter, because, quote, 'they don't care about us.'" I cannot express how discouraged these words made me feel. When you sent office, you took an oath to discharge your duties for the public welfare. I ask you now, was the decision to not even make a motion to vote on the implementation of a hybrid plan a fulfillment of that oath? You may feel that it is, but then I and my fellow students request an explanation as to how that act was in the interest of public welfare. What we face now is a lack of confidence and a lack of trust. As such, we propose the addition of a non-voting student representative to the school board. This individual will be able to speak on students' behalf and relate to what they are experiencing. They would also be able to inform the board of students' sentiments and concerns, hopefully leading to solutions that work in the best interests of students and teachers and the restoration of trust. Thank you all.
All right, next speaker, Michael Harris.
Michael Harris, 5235 Sledge Road, Christian Hill. My question is to the board tonight or to Trey Lee. I talked to the road department, they're out there, they've already taken my land through the court system, they condemned it, so they're widening the road. But my question is, are y'all putting a turning lane in off of Sledge Road? The road department says they have no plans for like about 150-foot section on Sledge Road, they don't know what they're doing. I asked Randy Ward yesterday, he said, "Go to the school board, we don't know." So my question is, is there going to be a left-turning lane going into the school road that y'all want to name? Also, is the school zone going to be on Sledge Road? Nobody seems to be able to answer that question for me. I don't know if y'all will answer it. I don't think you're allowed to talk to me, but if I sit down, maybe someone can answer it. Thank you.
Yeah, we'll have Mr. Lee to address that later, okay. All right, number seven.
All right, number seven is the proposed academic calendar for the 2021-2022 school year, you'll find on tab two. School starts, and we've approved, on August the 2nd administrative day, and it ends on May the 27th of 2022.
Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I have a question, and just for clarification.
Mm-hmm.
It seems like last time we looked at the, and I know things are totally different now, but last year, we looked at this, we did away with half-days or abbreviated days, and I'm seeing those reintroduced.
Let me look, take a look at this. I think what we did is we cut it from four to two.
Okay.
So that's what we did. Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions? All right, do we have a motion?
Motion.
Thank you, Ms. Maxwell, second. Mr. Estes, all in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes. Number eight.
All right, number eight, our 2021 graduation dates, found on tab three, you will notice on these graduation dates, these are on our campuses. There are backup dates and times that were made available. We did, what we tried to do is make sure that we directed, give them some direction in terms of, we know a lot of our parents also have friends and relatives in other schools, and as best we could, we tried to make sure that we avoided as many conflicts that we could. So as you can see on there, it is stated when each one will have a graduation date, and I'm making a motion, any motion to approve the 2021 graduation dates, times, and locations as presented.
Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I have a question. Will we be conducting the same way we did last year, monitoring the COVID virus and limiting the number of tickets, or do we not?
That's a great question. Right now, thinking the dates in May, I'll be honest with you, I would like to think maybe it would be a little bit different, but however, we will be monitoring that prior to kind of looking where we are at that time, sometime in maybe in April or late March, making some kind of, but that's a great question, absolutely.
Any other questions? Do we have a motion?
To approve.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson, second.
More.
Oh, there's more, I'm sorry. Ms. Johnson, second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. All right, number nine.
All right, number nine, we all know, we were informed, I think, past board meeting, that we did have a request for a charter school in the community. At this time, I'm gonna let Dr. Sullivan come up, he's gonna go over a variety of different things, I think he may have passed out some things for you to look at, and he's gonna try to give the abbreviated.
Yes, it's abbreviated, I have last. So if you'll, you have a manila folder, and if I put on the very top, just some key takeaways, and I kind of wanted to call those to your attention. So the first thing, if you will look at the first staple document, our charter school application, board policy, and just a couple lines I want to bring to your attention. So on page one, line 28, "A prospective charter school sponsor shall send a director of schools notice of its intent 60 days prior to April 1st." We have already received that, so that's why I have a checkmark by it, and you actually have a copy of their application here in just a little while. So our next steps, if you'll turn over to page two, which is line eight, "Applications are accepted only between March 1st and April 1st." So this is kind of our next step of what we're waiting on from the proposed charter. But during that time, we have some things that we are required to do. So if you'll skip on down to lines 14, this is where we get to our next steps. As a school board, the team shall be composed of members of the administrative staff of the district, community members, and a member of the board. At the board meeting in February each year, the director of schools shall make a recommendation to the board of which members of his administrative staff should be appointed to the team. So this will be our next board meeting, or the second one in February, that Mr. Speloff will make his recommendation on who of our central office and administrative staff should serve.
Let me jump in.
Yes, sir.
We'll need to put that on the February 2nd, because the 18th is our special call.
Perfect. Good. So we'll put that on our February 2nd meeting. That is all that needs to occur at that point, except for then the board will be looking for community members and deciding on which one of their board members, for Mr. Young is the chairman, who will then in March, if you skip on down to lines 17 and 18, says the board shall name the members of the team officially at its meeting in March of each year. At that point, we will designate a chairperson as the review team. On lines 31, and I'll skip to the next document here in just a second, this goes through what our actual options are for approval, denial of our application. And if you will now, if you'll go to the second document, that at the very top has Tennessee Charter School Application Scoring Criteria. This is a huge document, and we're not going to go through it, but at least wanted you to see that this is what the charter will be filling out for us. There are four main components, one of them, academic plan design and capacity, operations plan and capacity, financial plan and capacity, and then a portfolio review and performance review. And so this is what the team will be reviewing from the charter school. The third document is our Tennessee Code Annotated 49-13-108, the Approval or Denial of a Public Charter School. So this is our actual law, and there were a couple things that I wanted to bring to your attention here. First is A, and that is just our role in being an LEA of approving and reviewing the charter school. Next, if you will go to where's number three, and it talks about where the grounds for a local board-based decision to deny a charter school must be stated in writing and must specify objective reasons for the denial, and that's based on that big application document beforehand. If you will look at, on the next page, page two, so on page two now of the Tennessee Code Annotated document, this is one of the things that I wanted to just bring to your attention. Page four would have applied to us before December 31st, 2020. So page, number four, sorry, page two, number four, remember number four, IV, if the application is for a public charter school in an LEA that does not contain a priority school. We did not contain a priority school previously or the year prior, but if you'll look at B, this subdivision is repealed at 11:59 on December 31st, 2020. And so that is now no longer an option. Below that goes through the approval process, but it was a lot easier to follow on the next document I gave you. Yes, sir.
Who has the authority to, and, I guess you've got to use the.
Yeah, this would have been a, yes, absolutely. On the next document, if you will, it is the Rules of the State Board of Education. So these are the new rules of approval of a charter school and their house rules. And if you will go to page four of that, I've got a couple parts just with an asterisk beside it, that goes through the steps of how the state board looks at a approval or a denial. The first is the state board assembles a charter application review committee, and you'll see the requirements there. The state board uses a sample scoring, which is again, that big, huge document I gave you, that was the second one we looked at. They then will interview the governing board for the charter, and I'll go over that when you see the intent to apply here in just a second. And then in K, this is different. With K, it used to be that the state board would make this ruling, now the state board will have their own meeting in the LEA, and to where the district then, during a denial, would have to go through and discuss why it was not in the best interest of students. And the last part of that, you will see under M1, if the application does not contain a priority school, again, that is that section that went away, that is no longer applicable after December 31st. All right, the last two are just for your information, and again, I'm a teacher, so I tried to summarize just the highlights for you, is the Letter of Intent to Apply for a Public Charter School. You will see the name of the charter school, the contact person, a very prominent individual in Nashville. If you flip over to page two, you will see the current leadership, you will see quite a bit of connection with Tennessee Department of Education. A part that I did really want to highlight that is definitely troublesome for me is on page, on the second to last page, it's under targeted student population and school need. And I've got it highlighted and underlined. So it states that what is the reason in the need for this charter school? Nine schools within the 15-minute drive time described above had an average academic achievement score below a three. We're on a four-point scale, and so this is basically saying that our schools were a B, and that is the need for having that. And this is targeting the Smyrna and Laverne area, to where we actually have reward schools in that area, and none of them, again, are in the priority or an underperforming school in any realm of the imagination. And then that next one, you'll see that engagement efforts are supposed to begin this month with the community from this organization. The last document I have for you is, again, depending on what happens with the application, and anything we can do for our students to provide opportunities is something that we want to make sure that we are doing, but at the same point, we also want to make sure that we are being equitable to our students. And in Rutherford County, being a straight level-five district, for as long as I can remember, we are providing a very high-quality education to our students. And if you look at these waivers that have already been approved for this organization, for the Nashville Collegiate Prep, which is run by the same organization, you will see that they have received waivers already for staffing requirements of having licensed principals, hours and benefits, using whatever curriculum, how they compensate individuals, not having tenure for educators, they are at-will, and then staffing requirements, again, how they would staff those. And so again, if we are looking for equity of our students and ensuring that we are all providing a equitable education so that all our students achieve and succeed, I have some major concerns with these type of things and making sure that that's what's best for our students in Rutherford County. And I'll be happy to entertain questions, that was a big, quick snapshot of a lot of information.
How long does the charter, the approval?
Ten years, I believe. It's for 10 years.
And it's evaluated every, I'm a, every year?
It says here that it's gonna start out K5 and kind of.
Correct.
But they don't plan on going past the eighth grade?
Well, they may not go into the eighth, pass the eighth grades because they would then have to deal with athletics and some, a lot of other NCA things that they're gonna have to get into that they may not want any part of right now. They are only operating K8 district schools that I know of right now. They are also connected with knowledge academies, so Rethink Forward is the group, but they are actually run by, I believe it's in here, it's something EI, maybe NEI, that's it, it's NEI, and they run knowledge academies as well, which you can look at some of their performances in the past.
The requirements as far as the location of the school building?
Just has to be within our local district.
And, you know, and this is no transportation or anything?
That would be up to their charter. Usually, it depends on the area, I would imagine in that area, probably not. I don't know how they would fund that.
The hip is right over our.
Correct.
Mm-hmm.
Correct. So, this is just one, nice one, just to bring it to your attention, any questions?
Thank you, Dr. Sullivan.
Thank you. All right, number 10, financial matters.
All right, number 10 is financial matters, I think we've seen this one before here, this is a bill pertaining to joint resolution to support the Tennessee Local Education Investment Act. That is where the school districts with the last five years of growth equal to 2% or more, recoup some of the state sales tax back, and I think, last that we looked, we would have gotten $4 million, a little over $4 million last year, okay? And that bill was sponsored by some of our state legislatures, and they're gonna bring it back up again. If there's any questions over that, feel free to ask before we go into making a motion. If you have any questions, this will go to our Capitol, our Capitol Projects, obviously Mr. Lee would love to see this happen.
Yes, sir.
And that $4 million is, may not be what we need, but it helps.
It'd take care of probably three schools HVAC equipment.
Absolutely. Okay. All right, motion to approve this resolution that will be signed by the Board of Education along with the County Commission, as read.
Any discussion?
This is supported by all of our representatives. Excellent, excellent.
Yeah, we spoke with Senator Reeves, Representative Baum, every one of them were on board with it.
Excellent, excellent.
Yeah. Now, a lot of it's gonna be predicated on what our, what the budget looks like with the state. This is probably, how long have they been bringing this bill up?
Two years, at least.
At least three or four years, right?
This is the third year.
Is it the third year?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
All right, do we have a motion?
Motion.
Thank you, Ms. Maxwell, second. Mr. Estes, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Number 11.
All right, Mr. Lee's gonna take us through our two projects that we're working on right now currently, Laverne Middle and also Plainview, he's got some, you have some slides.
I do. Matt's got them pulled up for us now. Laverne Middle School, update, the general contractor's completing the pouring of all slabs on grade except for the gymnasium, they're working on that now and should have that completed by the end of January. The electrical contractor's completed all underground slab rough-in, is currently keeping pace with the masons as they build the walls. The plumbing contractor's completed all underslab rough-in, is currently stubbing the gang restroom, plumbing, and sewer lines as the masonry contractor extend the walls up to the second floor. The masonry contractor, contractor has completed the firewall located on the northwest end of the addition and is currently working their way across the slab toward the east end. They have topped out the east and south walls of the gymnasium addition, they've topped out, the contractor scheduled for the hollow core planks to be installed on the second floor by the end of January. The structural steel that supports the hollow core is on-site, the steel contractor's preparing to install steel beams prior to the placement of the planks over the next two weeks. That project's on schedule at this time for completion as scheduled. Next project is Plainview Elementary, and I'll deviate from what was on our slide to answer the question that was posed earlier in the meeting. Our engineers coordinated with the highway department's engineer when they were working on the road to coordinate where our entrance would hit Sledge Road, and there are plans for a right-turn lane and a left-turn lane into our access road on our, shown on our drawings and included in our bid. Plainview Elementary and site update, building construction, all slabs are complete, exterior masonry walls are 95% complete, interior masonry walls are ongoing. The picture you see there is the gymnasium, the brickwork is complete, the roofing has started, and the metal siding should be started at any time. Light gauge trusses are being set, areas B, C, and D are complete, area A is in progress. Roofing has begun on the gym, and area C, above ceiling and end wall electrical rough-in is ongoing at this time. Plumbing rough-in is ongoing in areas C and D. Duck work has started in areas C and D. Our site work, installation of the storm pipe, and on-site sewer are ongoing and progressing well. Blasting for detention pond A is progressing. We have installed 180 of our 256 geothermal wells. I had a question earlier today about how deep these wells are, they average 350 feet deep. Middle Tennessee Electric is scheduled to begin permanent power installation, setting poles and that sort of thing by the end of this month. If you'll look at the slide presently shown at the bottom of the screen, that's the front entrance, the top, the top of the screen would be the gym. So as you can see, that, and that picture is about two weeks old. That's our latest aerial photo. If, I think James has got a page with updated pictures, we fly aerial over it once a month, and I send the pictures to James, and he, he updates them every month, so you can kind of keep up with the progress. We've been doing that now for a long time, where we provide pictures to James, and he keeps us, keeps them out there for folks to see. The next part, under this is A, the ARAP permit. Matt, if you'll show the, there you go. I wanted to show this site, and this is something you'd seen, you have seen before, this is, the areas in blue are the streams and also our proposed wetlands that we've been working around. There's some additional areas that we found after we got on-site. The area in yellow on the left side of the page with the, that's actually the river flow, and what's in yellow is the area where our road leaves, the red boundary's our property. To the south of that is Hoover's Gap. You see the yellow Hoover's Gap Road there. We have to cross the river, and by say a river, it's more, it's a creek, but it's part of the river, and we have to cross that river to get the road that goes across the balance of the Tan Oak property to get over to Hoover's Gap Road. When we get, when we get to, and don't change, Matt, when we get to the next slide, that road will be highlighted. But this is the wetlands that we're dealing with, with TDEC and our ARAP permit, and what I wanted to let you know is, because this is gonna lead into C in a, in a minute, this is the area of disturbance where we will be actually installing pipe inside the riverbed that will allow us to build the road across over to Hoover's Gap. This area is considered wetlands, we're dealing with a salamander that is on the Tennessee species list. We have a lot of rules and restrictions that we have to follow to be able to cross the creek. We are in the final, we've been working with TDEC and our consultants, Griggs and Maloney here in town, ever since this project started, trying to get approval to build this road. We are hoping that we have reached the final leg, we've got all different parties signed off now, there'll be a public notice, that'll be going up soon, that's a 30-day process, and then hopefully, by the end of February, we'll be able to start the construction of this road. If we're able to do that, then we will be able to meet our deadline in August. What's coming up in C, and the reason I show you this and what we're talking about is wetlands credits. You've heard this before, we bought some wetlands credits for the construction of the property, we're gonna have to buy some more wetlands credits for this, for the road. So I wanted to show you this first before we get to that. As a part of this, and Matt, if you'll go ahead and show us the next slide, as a part of this, we've now, now that this road is coming to fruition, we've got, we need to name this road that goes through our property. The first part of this road that's on our property will be our Rutherford, it would be Rutherford County School Board Road, just like Red Hawk Parkway, any other, Thunderstorm Lane, any of the schools that we've built, roads that we build inside our property are school board roads. Roads that we build outside our property either become entities of the city or the county. In this situation, this will be a county road, it will all be one contiguous road, and it'll have the same name. will all be one contiguous road, and it'll have the same name. We will be responsible for part of it, and the county highway department will be part. The part that's off our property, we cannot own because we don't own the property, so they treat us similar to a developer. Nothing unusual. We haven't done in the past at Rocky Fork or when we did Oakland Middle, Whitworth Buchanan. It's fairly standard. We will build that road to county spec, and when it's finished, it will become the county's to maintain. So we need to name that road. Most of the time, I have a good recommendation for you guys. When we did Rocky Fork Elementary, we had the school mascots were thunder and storm, and I came in with Thunderstorm Lane. Worked out pretty good. When we did the Stewart's Creek Schools, Red Hawk Parkway kind of fit with, because all the schools have birds. And all of those schools were designed, mascots chosen, all that kind of thing. Don't have a real good selection for you, so my request, I guess, from the chairman and the board is maybe we get our committee that named the school back together one time, and in, we pick a date, and prior to that, they think of some ideas. We have a one-day, one-time meeting. We pick a name for the road. We come back to the meeting and get it approved. If that's okay with the board chairman and the rest of the board, that would be my recommendation, because we cannot get a physical address till we pick a name. Then I have to submit the name to 911. 911 approves it and then actually gives us a address. So it's, it's not a huge process, but it is a process. So I'm asked for, and I don't know if y'all need to make a motion or if that's okay if we just do that. Jeff?
Do you have a motion here?
Okay, Jeff says motions for the roads not required.
Do you have a motion on the wetlands?
Yes, I do on the wetlands. Okay, so that's the road. So let's go to the motion. Mr. Spurlock, you want to read it?
Yeah, motion to approve the purchase of 1.56 wetland credits from the Tennessee mitigation funds for a total of $1,400 as presented.
The, we are disturbing basically three-quarters of an acre, and it's a two-to-one swap. So if we disturb one, you have to buy two. So based on what we're disturbing at one point, it's .75. We have to double that, so we're having to purchase 1.56. The Tennessee mitigation for the, the folks that we bought the wetlands credits from before no longer have credits available, so we reached out to other entities that are in this business. These guys had some wetland credits in the Rutherford County area. You have to stay inside, you can't go to West Tennessee for Middle Tennessee. So these folks had some. This is their cost, and so I've got all the backup there. We need to, I need to authorize to spend the money to buy the credits.
All right, do we have a motion? Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Do we have a second? Ms. Bratton. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Next item is the five-year building program. We're not asking for a motion tonight. This usually takes a little bit of time for y'all to look at, ask questions, and come back. So this is our first five-year building program on your table tonight. We had a change from what we had in your packet, so I've provided you with an updated version. And getting a little older, the eight and a half, the eight-and-a-half-by-fourteens are a little easier to read. So I did that on that. What we're proposing for this coming school year, 2021, 2022, is a 20 classroom and, and I've got a typo. I guess 16 classrooms. It should be 20 classrooms at Rockvale Middle, not 16. Addition, this is a, and I'll show you the floor plan here in a minute of what that looks like. But basically, on our three academic and our exploratory wing, we're adding four, actually adding six classrooms to each wing. That keeps their grade bands intact, which the principals really like that. So we've been able to work with our architect and come up with a way to do that. So that's item number one. Item number two is the...
If you get into that, let me explain why on this one here, okay?
Right now, we have 10...
We have an old annex building. Y'all been in the Smyrna Middle School with the old annex building, and it's, it's in disrepair. It was, it was actually opened my senior year. That was a, was a CTE wing, Smyrna High, Smyrna High School. But what we're looking at is trying to alleviate overcrowdedness in Blackman Middle. And there are about 200 and something kids that live over, I guess with north of 24 toward Old Nashville Highway. So it's our thought process is that if we, if we renovate this, this building, we're going to have, we're going to be able to alleviate some of the over, you know, some of the things. Because we're right at the point currently where the capacity of Blackman Middle, even with the annex, is bursting its seams. So this would give us some time. I think we'd get 20, 20 classrooms out of it.
We, we add addition to what they have number-wise. It's eight, but we actually refurbished some others, so they end up with around 20 classrooms that get worked, get worked and reshaped.
You could, you could, you're actually raising capacity 450. You're, you're giving some opportunity to alleviate some overcrowdedness without actually having to, I would hate to have to put a portable next to a huge campus like Blackman Middle that already has an annex. So this would kind of help us. And what kind of cost are we looking at on that?
Total out, as I say, total out the door is $6 million, but construction cost about five and a half. The, the area that we're, Rockvale, Blackman, Stewart's Creek, to Smyrna West, that swath through there, where we've been looking for land for quite some time, and I'm going to throw it out there again tonight. If you've got any land on the west side of town, close to sewer, or has really good dirt so we can build our own, so we're still trying to find property on that west side to build, to build a middle school. With the, and if you haven't been in the Stewart's Creek area, I passed Mr. Spurlock over the holiday, and I thought he was out riding around looking at subdivisions on my end of the county. But it's, I was even, I'm blown away every time I ride somewhere. That swath between Stewart's Creek all the way to Rockvale, it's unbelievable. Every time I turn around, there's another subdivision, and I see it. The county and the city of Smyrna, Martha Spurlock, they're very good. They send us monthly their new lot inventory and everything that's been approved and what's coming, and it is mind-boggling. So the renovation of...
Laverne, you, you had some information about Laverne, Ms. Sharp?
I did. I spoke with Mayor Cole just prior to our meeting, because he was actually meeting with a company that's going to build some of those subdivisions right across the street from Rock Springs. And he had Mr. Gilliland that lived at an address that wanted at one time to give some property away because he had no heirs. So that's probably one thing that, or something that we need to look into. I think he was at 703 Waldron Road, and there's two or three other tracts in that area that are 100-plus, because I know that's, you know, a small track wouldn't do us any good. But there are, of course, just like Rock Springs, some of that property is the Rolling Hills. It's beautiful property, but it's not suitable. But, so we're facing this problem. It's a problem, it's not a new problem. It's just, it's blossoming faster. So the addition at Rockvale, the additions of 20 classrooms at Rockvale, and the renovation of Smyrna Middle is what we're looking at for this coming year. After that, we have a 16, a potential for 16 classroom addition, which is similar to Rockvale, just a few less classrooms at Stewart's Creek Middle.
Why are we doing last at Stewart's Creek? Well, we already have the plan?
We don't have the same area between the building and the parking lots at Stewart's Creek that we have at Rockvale.
Are there any plans for...
The plant, the, the...
So I'm thinking, why can't we just, you know...
The buildings are the same, but the area between the building and the parking lot is different.
Hey, Ms. Bratton, part of our issue with the size of those schools is we have about 10 portable classrooms already at Rockvale Middle that we're really only going to get about 10 additional classrooms, which quite honestly is not going to hold us very long with this Rockvale Middle addition at all.
There's no way we'd get 20?
No, ma'am. Fortunately, Stewart's Creek doesn't have any portables right now.
Exactly.
Rockvale does. So with 20, we get, we're going to move 10 portable classrooms inside, so that gives us 10 for, I'm going to use the term loosely, growth. That, that is, the growth around there's coming crazy, too.
These will be filled once that thing opens easily. They were right at 1,400 last year.
Right. See, these wouldn't open until 2022. So if we start now, we still have to deal with next year. They don't open until '22, so we could be looking at 12 to 14 classrooms easy.
And really, when you look at it, and we've talked about this, our three major areas of concern are the Rockvale Middle, Blackman Middle, and then Stewart's Creek Middle. That's the whole purpose of we're looking for the land on the western end of the county. These additions are needed, but like Dr. Sullivan said, a lot of this is emptying out the portables.
Wow.
So we could be looking at, and this is what really is a little concerning, because I, I get what this commission wants us to be good stewards with our money. We could actually build these additions at Rockvale Middle and even Stewart's Creek Middle and have to build a school somewhere within five years.
If the present growth continues, we will, we're going to need that. And that's why you'll also see right underneath that, it says middle school Matthews or 84096. It's going to be one of those two places because of the growth that's happening. We, we still got Siegel Middle with 13 portables.
Portables there, too.
That have been there.
Are there any plans to do anything with Siegel Middle?
The, where the main mechanical units, the cooling towers and that sort of stuff are located is where the additions need to be.
Right.
So you would have no heat and no electricity for a year. So, so the answer to your question is no. Unfortunately. Yes, ma'am.
So if I may, Mr. Lee, where would that put us? Because we know there's going to be probably a minimum of 2,000 homes at the end of Rock Springs, and then in front of, like Blair and Waldron Road in that area. And if our ratio holds true, that's going to be 2,600 students. That's literally two schools.
Yes.
Right there.
And so coming, that was my, where I was going, coming on the heels of this is what we're going to have to do in the Rock Springs middle area, because they are approaching their capacity as well. And you're correct, there's 600 homes right now presently fixing to get approval right across the street. At the end of Waldron Road, where it intersects with Rock Springs, the Gwynn Farm, there's 250 there to start. They have the potential for 350. They've just purchased another 100 and something acres behind it that goes over to Lee Road. That will be another 250 or 300. And there's two other subdivisions that are probably coming in the next 18 months between Lee Road and Rocky Fork, which are all going to impact Stewart's Creek and Rock Springs.
And Rock Springs middle set, I'm not, is there anywhere you can put anything on that cap?
It would, I'm beginning to look at that next.
Yeah, because it's sitting in a...
Yes, ma'am.
Very different place.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, okay.
So this is our proposed proposal, that really the, and all of this is important. And as we've said numerous times, years two, three, and four fluctuate based on where our children come from, and our numbers continue to grow. So those are for consideration and thought, and they can be changed next...
Can I ask, real quickly, I'm sorry, on this high school, it says Corridor or Buchanan. What about, I get calls all the time about Christiana High School. Is that...
No property out there.
Okay.
We have, we don't have any property in Christiana, and that's where the Whitworth, the Buchanan?
I saw that.
Yes, ma'am. That's where it comes into play. It would help alleviate that area.
Okay. I also think we need to be cognizant of the fact, it's not something we got to do tomorrow, but the fact that Riverdale does not have a feeder school that just feeds it. It's not in the little cluster, and that's becoming more and more of an issue for a lot of the people that live in my area. They, they, it's, it is, it's an issue. And I believe if we could get now, granted, I've, I've driven, I've tried to find land, and so we may have to get, I don't know, creative. But I mean, eventually, we're going to need a middle school for them, because when Whitworth Buchanan, which feeds into Riverdale, gets a high school, then it's going to be, it's, it's getting tighter and tighter and tighter, and it's kind of left all on its own. And parents who have kids in elementary school are like, I don't know if I want to stay in Riverdale's own if they, you know, if they can't all stay together. And so I just, I would like to see us be cognizant of the fact that we need, that we need this.
You got, we, we got plans on, on the Plainview.
Plainview, there is a high school there.
But a middle school also.
Middle school, yes.
And that will, that will take care of that. But I also think if we, we could take care of some of these people that live in the downtown area that wouldn't have to drive as far, and it would help, if we could align it with, with, with Riverdale, and it would help with the Rockvale, because we've sent so much of, I don't know, because so much of Riverdale got sent to Rockvale, you could bring some of that back and maybe shift all of that, and would help with our, our numbers as well. And that's like, it's something we don't have to do today, but I mean, looking at, if this is a five-year, if we're projecting five years down the road, I do believe we'll have to address that, because I think every, every school needs, ideally, we're putting them in these clusters, and it's out here without them being in the cluster, and it's, it's a problem.
Dr. Sullivan, do you know approximately how many, it's a very fractional part of their, their eighth grade that actually goes anywhere other than Riverdale Christiana Middle. Am I correct on that?
You would have a large, you'd have a large, it's probably in the middle. I know my own subdivision goes to Rockvale High School from over there, so it'd probably be between a fourth and a third of their overall population.
And, and I think, Ms. Maxwell's on to something. We could rezone some of those out of there to go to, how much room do we have at Christiana Middle, though? Do we have much room at all? I mean, we could rezone them to go to Riverdale is what I meant. Instead of them going to Rockvale, because quite frankly, Rockvale does need some...
Relief.
Relief. But you might be on to something right there.
I appreciate it.
Let's take a look at that.
Which leads me into our next point. Mr. Spurlock will read the motion. I need to, we're asking tonight for authorization for Beakley Garcia. They've got three proposals, Stewart's Creek, Rockvale, and, and since we've moved Stewart's Creek down, we may can probably hold on it, but I'm not being flippant. It's $300,000. Like to look at the design portion. It's design only. We're not authorizing construction. We'll come back when you approve the, we come back with a motion in a subsequent board meeting. But to meet these deadlines, the design for these particular projects needs to start now. So we've talked to Mr. Bowdery. We've done this in the past. What we typically do is approve the architectural design fees. We start the design. He does a budget amendment in a subsequent meeting where we use funds that we already have in our building program to pay for this, and then once the projects are fully funded, the money comes back. It's something we've done for a number of years. So the three proposals from Beakley Garcia, the three added together just under $1 million.
We, on these plans, designs, do we not use ones that we've already had and modify those?
We, we can when it's a follow-up, but these, we've never added on to these schools before. So, so the...
I get that, because it's really a little bit unique.
Yes.
Not like the, the annex that we have at Oakland Middle.
Correct. We've used that twice. That's very similar to what we did. And when we do a repeat, Beakley Garcia has a different fee rate. It's less than what it is for something that's new. So all of these are new.
If I'm not mistaken, they've won a couple of awards for their design.
In fact, we've got one recently for Rocky Fork Elementary, from the state TSBA for Design of the Year for Elementary.
All right, motion to approve the design services for three projects set at $933,500 as presented.
Any questions? All right, Ms. Moore, do we have a second? Ms. Bratton, all in favor say aye. All right. Ms. Moore, do I have a second? Ms. Braden, all in favor, say aye. Any oppose? Motion passes.
Mr. Chairman, Matt, just one question that I would have liked to ask before, but, Mr. Lee, if, if we have to put off or longer, these design would plan.
They hold true. We'll still use them. I mean, that's what we've done in the past. If something has happened, we delayed a year. What, this design fee is about eighty-five percent design, fifteen percent construction administration to pay for their services while we're under construction. So we would probably pay up to about eighty-five to ninety percent, and the other ten percent would not be spent till the project's built. And in my tenure, we have not designed something and then not built it. We've always built it.
Thank you.
But, yes, ma'am.
The other thing, Mr. Lee, as we are building these new schools, and especially these middle schools that have to be added on to, let's make sure that we leave enough room.
Well.
Just in case.
You're, you're new to the board, Ms. Braden, and I should have brought that. When we brought before this board, when I brought before this board, the Plainview Elementary, that is already in the plan. The Plainview Elementary is designed to be added on to, sixteen classrooms. We've also gone ahead and designed the cafeteria large enough to hold the entire capacity so that we're not starting lunch at nine-thirty or ten o'clock and going till one-thirty or two o'clock, because we have a, it's like portables. We can get enough children in a portable and on campus, but our cafeteria is still the same. So they end up starting lunch at ten o'clock, ten fifteen, and other children don't get lunch till one or one-fifteen, because the cafeteria is not sized for the number of students. So with the advent of Plainview, we have made that a priority, and it is ready to be designed. So with those, we could go in and add four classrooms. Let's say we needed, instead of adding a portable, you could go build four classrooms, and then a couple of, a year or whatever, you could go back and build four more. They're not dependent upon each other.
Very smart.
One question. I spoke with you over, by phone a couple of days ago, and you were telling me that you had redrawn some plans, because to try to get Riverdale and Oakland out of portables, I had had the idea early on to, to enclose them, and due to the fact of their age and the sprinkler system, we can't fully enclose them, but you said that you could try to draw up something.
We, we have, the architect sent two different options to the state fire marshal's office. Once we find out if one of those is acceptable, then I can bring that back to the board at that time. There's no reason to bring it if it's not gonna be approved.
I got you. But I just wanted to know, how many classrooms do you think we could get out of?
About four.
What?
Four.
Four?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
And as a little buildup before Mr. Spurlock reads, my final item for tonight, the ESCO RFP. We've talked about this numerous times. I told you we'd bring it to you. It's a long, lengthy document. I've had a lot of help on this to go through it. Doug, Lynn, Peter, Sarah Page. They, they're learning a lot about HVAC and ESCOs and utility cost, and I wanted a diverse group to review it. Mike Walls is also in this, and then when we, as we go through this process, they will be a part of the committee as we review this proposals and come back to you. So this is the final proposal. I've got the ad. Purchasing has an ad ready to go to the paper in the morning. We're planning on sending them out starting Monday, and what we need tonight is for you guys to authorize us to go ahead and send out the RFP.
Motion to approve sending out the RFP dash, number twenty-one dash zero-one to receive bids for the energy conservation as presented.
Any discussion?
I'll move, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Ms. Sharp. Do I have a second? Mr. Estes, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Motion passes.
My final thing for you tonight is something that you've been seeing since Mr. Spurlock and I started. You've been seeing it as a three-year capital projects plan. Mr. Spurlock asked me this year to expand it to a five-year plan. You have your first look at that. It's a four-page document. You, it's not changed from what you have on your iPad, but I also brought you one tonight. We're not gonna go through that line item by line item. It's a lot of things to look at. A lot of it you've seen in the past. Some of it is new, because when you go five years, it doesn't spread out your three-year into five. You bring into those, those next tiers, year four, the year five. So it's a five-year plan. It's up to a little over a hundred billion. It's a lot of money. We, we are not getting any younger in our buildings. So that four million that Mr. Spurlock's talking about, we could potentially get if the state would do that. That would go, anything we can get helps. The county's been pretty good about averaging about seven million, and it's plus or minus. So if we could get seven from the county and four from them, y'all can do the math, that's about ten years to catch it up, but you know what happens then. We're, we're still getting further and further behind, but I do want you to know. And we do relook at each and every item every year. You may look at it, can compare it to last year's and go, well, this was in a first year last year, and it's in a second year this year. Well, something's gotten worse faster than it got worse, and we've reviewed it, and now, if I've got to make a choice, this, they got bumped to year two. Doesn't mean that it's any less urgent to get fixed. It just means that something's more urgent, has moved ahead of it. So we're throwing, I'm putting it out there for that tonight. I'm hoping that you guys will take some time, give me some calls if you have some questions, so that we can discuss it, so that you understand it. I want to make sure you folks are informed on all of our capital project needs.
And as we look at this, one of the things that we've gone over and we'll be bringing forth to you guys here later on, the application for the stimulus, it was open today, and we started on that. However, we've already budgeted that out, and one of the things that we can use that money for is delayed capital maintenance. Now, this is how, how big of a project we have, six million dollars, I think, that we're gonna use from stimulus to do some of these capital maintenance projects. That's just a dent, a small dent. Now, this is a one-time thing, and it's allowable, and it's obviously needed, so that's the reason why this, this resolution is very important. Also, and it's a reason, a good reason why, when we look at this energy savings thing, we.
Yes.
To do some things. It's just, it's a challenge. When you've got, we've got fifty, actually fifty campuses, it's a difficult task, especially when one was built in nineteen forty-nine.
Yes, sir. And you don't think about it. Oakland and Riverdale opened in seventy-two.
Right.
And people forget that Segal and Blackman are now approaching twenty years. You don't, I've had numerous people recently go, Segal's not that old, and I go, well, it was open about twenty years ago, and they go, oh, it wasn't. And they think about it, it was. It's twenty years.
Mr. Spurlock, or Mr. Lee, if I may, this is perfect to send to our legislators. If we could have something like this in a PDF instead of an Excel file, that we could send to them, that way it doesn't get accidentally manipulated or something like that. This gives them something to look at and actually see what we're looking at.
In fact, that's what Mr. Bowdre and I met with Senator Reeves. That was one of the big things that we talked about. And, and did we ever send those out? Did we ever send a copy of our?
We provided it to Charlie Baum, but not to Senator Reeves.
Okay. We need to, like, like.
I'll, we'll swap it to a PDF, and I'll send it to Jennifer in the morning, and then she can distribute it as it's needed.
That's, I mean, I think we all need to be sending this out to everybody that we talk to, because people who live in their neighborhoods, they don't realize that we've got fifty schools.
Yeah.
And, you know, I was talking to AT&T about Wi-Fi that we cannot get on the north end of the county. I was like, y'all, we're not rural. This is, we're ten minutes from downtown Nashville. So there, you know, we've got to bring, and I was talking to them, I said, you know, we're the fourth largest school district in the state, and we've got children that don't have Wi-Fi up here on the north end of the county. If we do, it's spotty. But things like this, that we can give to them, something that's tangible, I think really puts a lot of power behind what we're asking for, because they can actually see it. Because they, they just go through their neighborhoods, and they see the neighborhood school that they're in, and they don't think about the other forty-nine or fifty buildings that we have. Okay.
Be glad to do that first thing.
Thank you so much.
All right. Any other discussion? All right. Number twelve, insurance update.
Our next meeting is Thursday, next week, at one o'clock, so we'll have an update at our February second meeting. But I did want to mention, I had a couple of questions about insurance this week. One was on FMLA. If I was covered on FMLA, would I still have insurance? Answer is yes. One of the other questions that I received this week was, if I'm on unemployment, would I be covered by insurance? Yes. And then if it was extended amount of time, then the Cobra would help to be picked up. But I had two questions this week, and I thought if anybody else needed clarification, this might be a good time.
Thank you for that, because we've had some strange questions about.
And if I could piggyback on that, I did clarify with Marvin Williams. He's the legislative assistant for Representative Sparks. If you exhaust all the benefits that we have at the school, you can claim unemployment if we send you on quarantine. Typically, if you're unemployed, they would want you to be able to work, but since you're on quarantine, you can't work. But there are specific categories that you can claim unemployment for if we send home for quarantine.
Any other discussion? All right. Number thirteen, directors update.
All right. Just a couple of things. I'll piggyback on what Dr. Anthony said and what he talks about. First of all, let me give you an update on data as far as the COVID in, in the county. We currently, as of today, have two thousand three hundred ninety-six active cases. That gives a spread rate of point seven-two percent, which puts us back in the yellow. We also have a seven-day average number of new cases at a hundred and seventy-three point seven. The positive rate over, average over seven days is eighteen point four percent. Now, I'm gonna give you some of the schools currently, where we are this week in schools, students, out of our, our students that are in on traditional and some that are out. We had sixty-three positive cases. We had twelve hundred and fifty-three quarantines, which means, you know, what we talked about, being caught up in quarantines is, is a difficult task. There's four hundred and ten that are out waiting for testing. A lot, about, probably about ninety-five percent of those will end up being quarantined or, or the other, or coming back because of testing. So that's sixteen hundred and sixty-three total, when you add up the, the positive, the quarantine, and the out for symptoms. Staff, we had a hundred and thirty-nine quarantined. That's broken down by fifty-one classified and ninety-seven certified. We had fifteen that are positive, there were eleven classified, and four certified. We also have rapid tests. We've, we've, up to this point, since it was approved, we've had sixty people take the rapid test. Fifty-eight have come back negative, and it's provided us an opportunity to get people back to work, and only two to come back positive. You know, I think our, our teachers and our administrators and our students are doing a great job at the beginning of this new, new semester, and I know there's been some concerns. And what I would like, Dr. Anthony, is kind of go over the, the accommodations, so that, how we're working with our, our teachers and staff to meet their, their needs.
Okay, sure. So I'll talk about American Disabilities Act, the ADA. As you know, that's a very interactive process. Each scenario is unique. We've had a lot of our employees to talk with their principals and even reach out to Sarah and I, brainstorming ideals to help them to meet the essential duties of their jobs. So with that interactive process, we have medical input forms that we can get advice also from their medical physician, if that's necessary. But most of the times, it's been very simple solutions that have been able to put them easily back in comfort and on the road, such as maybe more PPE gloves, wipe-down items. Trey Lee's been excellent in helping us to handle that. Or it may be something as simple, if they might be diabetic, to have more breaks during the day to be able to get their snacks and get their, their levels back correct. It may be as simple as not having early morning bus duty to keep them away from a larger crowd of students at one time to help if they had some underlying conditions. And most of those items can be under five hundred dollars on average, and, and, you know, it's, like I said, it's a very interactive process. We're always looking for ways to help the employee. Another accommodation, they may ask for unpaid time for leave, and that's a reasonable accommodation as well. And we're just here to, in addition to the principals and their supervisors, to help answer any of those questions. And if you hear anybody that needs additional help or wants additional brainstorming, we're, we're here, a great team trying to find solutions for our employees.
Now, one of the things, and I will knock on wood, is substitute field rates going up. So I'll aim into that. I hope it continues. I'll probably jinx this right now, but it's getting good. I actually called a principal up the other day, and I said, how many do you have out? And he told me, I said, what's your field rate like? He said, ninety percent.
Right. And we'd like to welcome Betty Savage back. Betty was with us many years ago when we first were with Advantage, and so she's taking Rosie's position at this time. So Janet and Betty are working very hard. They've, they've already taken our advice on the eighteen to twenty-one-year-olds, since they're already getting that in, you know, been working with them to issue. They've sent out all the information to our whole entire College of Education for those students, and passed it along to the other departments. So we've got twenty-seven new subs just this past week along. So interviewing those, and we welcome Betty back on board.
Mr. Chairman, if I may ask, Dr. Anthony, a question. So I'm happy to hear that we're gonna make some adjustments to our subs. Can our college students outside of the College of Education reach out to them and apply as well?
Absolutely. So Bobby Lucia, her department, they've been spreading that information. There's been a lot of other departments, such as the Science Department, and those who are just exploring, thinking about going into the career of education. Maybe they thought they were gonna do one item, and then, and then they've changed their mind. So that's opened up a whole new venue for them.
And that's effective immediately?
Yes. I talked with Robert Romano, their VP today, at a nine-thirty phone call, and they're very excited. They've already been seeing anywhere from eighteen to twenty-one-year-olds and some very twenty, mature twenty to twenty-one-year-olds, because they're doing their individual selection to try to see what would be the best type of placements for them. So they're already starting to see them come in this week.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Any other? All right. Moving to number fourteen, TLN. Ms. Braden.
This has been an extremely busy week and continues to be on the hill. We've kind of worked as a team this week, because there's so much information. I could keep you here till midnight, but I'm not going to. So I have asked a couple of people who were kind enough to go on Tuesday to give me just one thing that they learned this week, and that's going to be Ms. Maxwell and Ms. Sharp. And then Ms. Johnson has been doing some research for me, and then I'll, so, Maxwell?
Well, the first thing I want to say, I got to speak with Senator Reeves just briefly, and that was like the third or fourth time I'd ran into him. He's gonna hate to see me every time he sees me, but, and I spoke to Tim Rudd two weeks ago. I spoke to Mike Sparks with Ms. Sharp that day, and we had just a brief conversation with Charlie Baum. And then I talked to Dawn White later that afternoon, because I wasn't able to get a hold of her. And the most important thing is they're all pulling in the same direction. They're all in the same boat. They're all rowing together, and they get it. They really do get it. And the thing I think that was the most important thing that I took away from it is compensation for the teachers. They're talking about, I'm gonna call it what Mr. Bell did in the session, summer school. They called it camps, but basically a summer school, and by a thousand dollars a week, that's, per week for a teacher, that's, that's really, that's really good. And so I, I think the teachers will feel valued and will, will like that. So that's what I took away from that, is that they're ready to put their money where their mouth is. Go ahead.
Okay. You know, I don't know if I can just do one thing, but I'll just tell y'all, Representative Sparks drug us up the steps, every one of the steps at Capitol Hill. So I'm surprised there wasn't an emergency there. I don't know how many steps there were, but there's a lot of them, because we came from Colville Hall all the way up to the Capitol. And once we got to the Capitol, then we had to go further up into the Capitol. So, but one of the things Ms. Braden and I had spoke about is the literacy program. And I haven't had a chance to talk to our teachers or Dr. Sullivan, but I would like to see, I appreciate their efforts that they're going into this, and there is an issue with literacy. But if they're gonna spend a hundred million dollars, I would rather see it spent on our teachers. We hire our teachers for their experience. We promote them, and we, we give them more money for their. for their experience and everything. And doggone it, there's probably not a teacher out there that doesn't know how to teach phonics. And so I guess the bottom line is, I'd like to see the $100 million instead of going to some of these vendors and the contractors and things that are out of state, go to our teachers and come to our own district. And let, hashtag, let our teachers teach, because they know what they're doing. So I'll stop there. Sounds pretty good.
Yeah. We're going, I'm meeting with two of the ELA specialists, the elementary ELA, because I have some concerns. We've been switching so much over the, so if you're interested, whenever Dr. Sullivan sets up this meeting, you're welcome.
You know, I'm open. I'm ready to go.
I'd like to.
I mean, they're very effective people, so.
This is the third literacy initiative we've had in the last five years?
Five years.
Five years. It's what I thought. I just wanted to make sure. But we can't keep doing that. We can't keep changing.
Our teachers have enough.
Reading is what we've been concentrating on, which is a very strong phonics program, I do believe. But I agree with you.
Yeah, basically, every time we've been changing a commission of education, we've had a new literacy push. I mean, basically.
And it's like a, it's like a, it's like a pleasure boat to put just money down that hill, because we never finish anything. And if we would just let our teachers do, our teachers are smart enough to know where the gaps are for our students.
They are.
Ms. Sharp, I have a question on that then. So can you speak to, is this one of the bills? And if so, what, because I completely agree with you. I mean, we keep throwing all these hundreds of thousands and millions of dollars at these programs when they're, they need to be listening to the, to the ground forces, what's best for our students, what's best for our kids. So what can we do to fight that? Is it still, is this something?
I think we all need to reach out to our legislators and ask our principals and our teachers and everybody else if they feel the same way, just to reach out to them. Because, you know, there's no final bill, and we know how the bills, you know, sometimes are just placeholders, and they say that's what they're going to do. And then once they argue them and debate them, and, you know, everybody puts their little piece in the pie, it comes out to be something else. So it could be two or three different drafts by the time that final bill is actually voted on. But, I mean, I think that that's something that we need to do, and especially keep the money here. There's educators in this state that are fully capable of doing some of this stuff.
And I would venture to say, and I would ask that Mr. Spurlock or Dr. Sullivan jump in and tell me if I'm off the mark with this, but I would say that if you were to poll our teachers that are responsible for teaching these kids how to read, if they think $100 million to throw out a new literacy program is a good idea, I'm not sure anybody's going to agree with that.
And Ms. Moore, I'll hit on that if you don't mind. We just got finished adopting a brand-new ELA adoption that hits on phonics. So our teachers received a, and are still receiving hours upon training. So my big concern is this also connects back to literacy initiative that failed from last year. So it's almost like another way to push that literacy initiative from last year. But then also, if we're asking our teachers, I think right now there's a proposed two-week training for them. There are always so many teachers to go around to do a two-week training and summer camp and do summer school. Our teachers have to have lives as well outside of just that.
And not only that, and I'm sorry, Ms. Breit, the 30, was it $30 million that they put aside for the raises? I mean, just our raises, 2%, if my memory serves me correct, was over $7 million, just to give our district raises the last time that we looked at it. So $30 million across, how many, 95 counties across the state? 95? 100? I know there's county and city, so.
41, when you count your county, 42? 42, school district, when you count your county.
So that's not, that's not, that's not a whole lot of money. I mean, after COVID and everything, we really need to look at compensating our teachers and making sure that they're taken care of, and not putting another target for them to aim as far as the literacy program.
We met Monday, I think it was. Was it Monday? Doug, you, me, and Trey, when we went over the stimulus allocation, we're working on something. And Doug's, you know, it's a fluid process, because quite frankly, our budget is tight, but we're looking at something where we're trying to make sure that everyone gets compensated, including everyone. Am I right, Doug? And keep in mind, we've got about four, over 400 and something positions that are paid from local.
County, right.
So that's, but we're, we are, that was our conversation we had on Monday morning, and we're looking at trying to.
Could you tell us, because I did have someone ask, those 400 positions, are they across the board? Are they just, are they unfunded mandates? Will we have to fill in the nursing?
It could be a little bit of that, but basically, it's kind of like, like, for example, you got a, excuse me, you've got a third grade class, and there's 56 students, you know, and it's, it's, it's one to 20. So you may have, you know, I mean, you may have two classes with 20, but you got that third teacher with 16. After you do that in a few more schools, you start getting more positions.
Right.
Are not falling under the BEP formula.
Right. And the BEP formula is outdated, sort of like the unemployment compensation that we get. So that's another thing we need to encourage.
Mr. Spurlock, don't we cover things like our interventionist and the things that I think put us at the top?
Absolutely.
But we cover their salaries completely. That doesn't come out of that BEP funding money.
A lot of our parents are representatives, if they don't have a child that's in one of those programs, that doesn't need that particular service, has no idea. They're thinking that, you know, they've just got teachers and everything. But there's so, there's so many things that our school system takes care of behind the scenes that the general public are unaware of.
Ms. Moore.
Yeah, I want to touch on a point that Ms. Sharp made, though, before. Now, Ms. Page, I don't mean to put you on the spot here, but I want to ask a question, because I know you follow this. If I'm not mistaken, that House Bill 7,002, it was going, it's in calendar and rules this afternoon, or at 1:00 it was supposed to be. And it already passed in the Senate for the literacy program.
I have not been following that bill today. I was not in the field today, so I have not done an update.
Okay.
I'm not sure where they're at, but I can be happy to check on it, as always. TSBA's been sending us updates as they followed it along. I haven't heard where we're at, but they're moving quick. I will say that to you, board members. They're flying.
Lot of pushback, retention.
Yeah.
I mean, that's a huge amount of wave of pushback on the retention of third graders and their overall grade level.
They're working, and like all things in special session, amendments just continue to come in, so it's impossible to follow. I know they want to be done by tonight, but they scheduled a meeting for tomorrow morning, just in the event that they needed the time. One of the pieces of legislation that actually got sent to summer study, but was really interesting to me, to address Ms. Sharp's point about funding for teacher salaries, House Bill 7,001 by Representative Griffey and sponsored in the Senate by Senator Pody, would have taken fees on money transfers that go outside of the United States. It had a pretty decent fiscal, positive impact, but it would have fully funded, or it would have funded salary increases or improvements for teachers specifically. So I'm a little disappointed to see it go to summer study, but.
That means it's dead.
They are working and thinking outside of the box, which is encouraging through this session, so.
You would be surprised how much, former banker, you would be surprised what the fees are on money sent outside of the country.
Wow, yes.
It's $1 million a week every grocery store. Millions.
Surprising.
And to wrap all of this up, Mr. Spurlock has hit upon this just about every time we've talked about this, is that the data that's going to be generated by our assessments are going to hold teachers, schools, and districts harmless. But I want to read you one little part on this, just to make sure we all realize, that this bill requires districts to test 80% or more of the enrolled students in grades 3 through 12 in order to be held harmless on the A through F school grading system and identification as a priority school. So if we don't test 80% or more of our children, for some reason, on this hold harmless accountability, then we are not held harmless in this A through F system. Isn't that interesting?
One thing I would like to ask the board, going back to what Ms. Sharp was talking about earlier, spending more money on programs instead of putting that money back into our teachers' pocket. The board be interested in doing a resolution to send it to the legislators?
Yes.
We want to see if our fellow city school board would join with us?
Most definitely, yes. Well, if we could get, help him, Mr. Reed. I appreciate if you could start drafting something up there.
If that bill is moving as rapidly as Ms. Johnson thinks it may be, and we're going to address that specifically as well in that resolution, which I'm gathering is kind of the intent here, that, hey, quit throwing all this money at new programs when we so seriously need other things. I think time is of the essence, then, if we're going to get it pulled together and presented to our legislators.
There were four, Mr. Chairman, there were four bills that the administration, there were administration bills that are going through this special session, and that was House Bill 7,002, 7,003, 7,004, and 7,020. So I, and those, if you look and follow them, those are the ones that are really moving. A lot of the others are caption bills. So I suspect that because they are administration bills, we're going to, we're going to see them come through.
That's where all of this information rests in these four bills.
If we can fast-track that, Mr. Reed, we'd appreciate it. All right, FRN, federal relations. Ms. Johnson?
I have an update for us. Obviously, we know we have a new president and vice president, and there's been some executive orders that have already been signed. I talked to Ben Torres at TSBA, and I didn't see anything that stood out specific for education, but we know there's educational components within that legislation or within those executive orders. So we're still to see. But there is a proposal that President Biden has, it's called the American Rescue Plan, which is a stimulus package, and it's $1.9 trillion. The House and Senate has said they intend to pass it the first week of February. And what I'm able to find is $130 billion would go to open schools so far, and proposal $350 billion in assistance for state and local government. So how much of that, if any, would come to schools as well? We shall see.
And to piggyback on that, the issue that we're seeing now is the state legislature is not going to take up hold harmless to BEP until they see if feds, keep in mind, we'll be starting getting into our next, working on our budget for the next fiscal year. This can be, it can be a problem, a problem for us, because, you know, we all, I think currently, we're about, what, 850 ADM down from this time last year? That's, that's, that's tangible amount of money. When you consider that we probably will come back and make up for that and double it.
We know we've got the raises coming, and we also know we've got insurance increases coming. So all those things are going to factor in.
Just to briefly follow up, Ms. Johnson, it has passed the Senate, the bill, and is on to House floor for calendaring for probably tomorrow.
All right, general discussion.
Mr. Chairman, if I may have a floor, I'd like to take a few minutes. I would like to address our young man, Mr. Severn, that came in earlier. And I actually have several things, as I've thought about this and kind of looked through your stuff, that I'd like to say in response to your presentation. First of all, thank you for coming to us. You're very professional and polished, and we appreciate that. First of all, Mr. Severn, I want to say to you, on my behalf, I can't speak for the rest of my fellow board members, but you did indeed send us an email. We discussed this briefly before the meeting, I guess, what, week and a half, two weeks ago? And you shared with me tonight that you had not received any response from anyone, and that is absolutely unacceptable. So from my personal standpoint, yes, I should have responded to you, and I apologize that I didn't. I'm going to preface the rest of what I'm going to say by saying that your whole proposal for a student representative on the board is actually something that, over the past six years I've been on the board, I've brought up on several occasions, and unfortunately didn't get a lot of traction with it. But I think that may have been largely because the board was dealing with so many other messy and difficult issues that it just kind of slid to the wayside, not necessarily acceptable. I have personally spoken with several different members of different boards across the state, when we've been at TSBA or even national conferences, who have had student representatives on their boards, and I have heard from those board members nothing but good things about the results that they got from that process. But let me kind of go back to, I do want to share with you that what you shared about you and your fellow students having so much disappointment in the board, and I think there was a comment about us not caring about the children or the, our kids. Personally, and I believe every school board member here would join me with this, there is nothing that could possibly be further than the truth.
And if I may, I'd like to say, and that's not my opinion, I certainly believe you all have incredible care for the students. I think the fact that students have that opinion, even if it may not be right, is the problem there, because I think that the organization, for it to be effective, for legislation to be effective, people have that faith in the decisions that they're making. The opinions I share are not my personal opinions. I think we have to work to address those opinions of students and teachers so that this, so that Brother County Schools can increase its advocacy and can work towards. We're seeing huge growth among students, and I think that what this proposal adds here is a chance for Brother County Schools to increase faith among people in service.
Right. Very well said, and I appreciate that. Thank you. But again, and even if not your personal expression, then, because I think if you ever sat down, and I'm certainly willing to offer myself up to do this, if you and any of the folks from your group would like to sit down individually with board members, and you listen to our hearts and our reasons for why we're here, and we just made the decision to take on these roles to begin with, you would hear from everyone on this board that it's, that it is about the kids. And so I want to kind of transition that into addressing your concern and the concerns that I've heard from a lot of people about why the board didn't take a position or even call for a vote on the hybrid proposal that was brought up at our last board meeting. And again, speaking for myself, but I think, and what I've seen from a lot of the emails and things that I've received, that there are a lot of people out there with a perception of the fact that we didn't do anything, was saying that we didn't do anything, if I'm making sense, and stay with me. Nothing could be further from the truth. I think, in fact, the fact that the board didn't do anything on that hybrid program spoke volumes that we were doing something, and that something was that this board very unanimously agreed that that was not the best move for us to make. And I know fellow board members that I've talked with are like I am in any decision like that, especially something that weighty. And all of these weighty decisions that we've been making throughout this entire COVID situation, I know before I contemplate anything or make any vote, or cast any vote, or make a motion, the first question I always ask myself is what's best for our kids? And the input that I had received from the public, and when I say public, I mean parents and lots of them, as well as a number of teachers, was overwhelmingly that this hybrid program, coupled with the other things that we were already doing, was a disaster waiting to happen. Now, is that accurate or not? I don't know. But again, the board didn't make a motion or didn't take a vote, because no one on the board felt good enough about that proposal to even make a motion. So it really wasn't doing anything, not doing anything. It was, in fact, in my opinion, doing quite a lot. I want to talk a little bit about your proposal, and I've got a couple suggestions to make. Mr. Chairman, I do think, and I realize right now, we've got a lot of big things on our plate right now, but again, I love the idea of having a student representative on the board. I've looked through your proposal, and there's a lot of things, and I'd like to spend a little more time with it. But if the board is in any sense of agreement at all that this is something that we should explore, I'm passionate enough about it, I'm more than happy to take on championing that cause. I will say, though, that one of the things that I've learned, especially from a lot of corporate experience at the negotiating table, whether it's negotiating with unions or anything else, that the rule of thumb is if you're going to come to somebody's table, you know, whether it's the negotiating table, or I think I read somewhere, King Arthur's Round Table, that the best way to get results is not to come to that table initially with a sword, but with a solution. And, and I think maybe you had a little bit of both in here. But again, I like the idea. One of the things I would recommend to you, whether we pursue this or not, is if you have students like yourself, if we have high school students out there that are interested in getting involved with this, reach out to our TSBA, our Tennessee School Board Association, and ask them about our, the Scope program. Are you familiar with that? Okay, the Scope program is something that TSBA does every year, and the Scope stands for the Student Congress on Policies and Education. It is a phenomenal program. I've been there to mentor a couple of years that they did it. It's high school students that have applied from across the state that go to a weekend conference, basically. Or I don't know that it's on a weekend, I think it's actually during the week. And participate in all kinds of debates and group meetings and things, discussing different policies and things that are put out there for them to debate. And they even have to come to the Scope mentors, and each group presents, almost like a debate club would do, somebody takes the pros and somebody takes the cons. So it's a tremendous learning experience for any students that are really interested in school board business. So with that, again, thank you. I apologize that I had not responded to you. And I would like to see the board discuss this further at future meetings.
And I would just like to say thank you all, you know, the board, and thank you all, and a lot of you guys, so a lot of.
The people who vote you do. Education's been incredibly hard to fight as a future administrator school board. We can disagree on policy, we can disagree on actions taken, but I think I and my fellow students are really grateful for all the work that you and all of the 5,300 staff across this, this school district have done for all of us to keep us learning, regardless of the circumstances, maybe, spread lengthens, then my thanks to you all for that.
And well, your school is in my district, and I would love to come and sit down and talk to you. So Dr. Ash has my phone number, I was asking, text me anytime. Yes.
Could I add something? Just because we did not choose the hybrid option, we, our central office staff put a lot of time and a lot of energy into it. And of course, always, they are invaluable. Just because we didn't choose it doesn't mean that it wasn't something that we thought was, you know, that they had put hard work into, because obviously that they did. I'm sure they put hundreds of hours into it. But like Ms. Moore said, I had numerous emails from parents. I actually had probably five emails from students in my district that was against the hybrid. So sometimes, even though we don't adopt a policy, if we don't adopt something that we're working on, it really doesn't have any bearing on if it's something good, it's just not a good fit. So I wanted to kind of clear that up.
Any other comments there?
I have some other business stuff, too. It's really been, after watching a lot of tape, watching the governor's message, and then watching a two-hour session of, while they peppered Ms. Swin, Education Secretary, with questions, and my mind's kind of blown, I kept coming back to the fact that the primary focus seems to be on K through third grade, which is totally understandable. I totally, I totally get that. But I'm concerned not being that far removed from having high schoolers, and that I worked at a high school, very concerned that, you know, with the money for this, looks like this isn't even going to happen until maybe next year. I'm worried about this year's group of kids that are graduating from high school. I'm worried that last year, you know, at the end, they lost months. And now they've been kind of up and down this year, just, you know, whatever their circumstances are, whether they were distanced and decided to come back, or they got quarantined and tried to stick it out with the in-person. They're not doing well across the board. And I'm concerned that, and I know money is tight, we don't, what can we do to help those kids right now in some kind of summer school, my kids went to summer school, and make it where they can't say no, really, and so that they can really get where they need to be closer to it? Because I know that some of them, if it's not paid for, are not going to do it. And I want them to have earned their diploma. And I want to raise those up that are right there, because I know under even the best of circumstances, with some of these kids, you are pulling them across the finish line. And I don't want to, you know, they lost their junior year, a lot of their junior year, and now their senior year's been crazy. What can we do? And I think I spoke with Dr. Sullivan beforehand, and he said that he thought he had some, some ideas.
Well, what we did, we met this morning about our senior class. And what we've, what we've done is we've reached, reached out to our principals, and we've, we're collecting some, some data on it on terms of, because we're, right now, I'm concerned about the graduation. We're going, we're working on that. Now, we are going to have summer schools. We are going to have, we're going to have in-person summer schools. It's our, our point right now. It should be coming out sometime in February, our location and everything, Dr. Sullivan?
Yeah, we plan on, because the state's going to offer the summer camps for K-8, that's leaving our high school students out. And so we're going to have to do something as a district, using our SRR 2.0 funding to be able to do summer school, to be able to make sure.
Going to be the magic word, F R E E?
We've got, if a student qualifies for that, then yes, we will have that, and then we should be able to handle that.
We've always done that.
Okay, that's wonderful.
But I think this will probably be a larger summer school, more than likely.
Good, because.
I think all the higher eds are looking at waiving ACT scores, and you'll probably have a lot of remedial classes and everything like that offered at those.
Are we looking at anything that's going to keep them from losing their hope scholarships and money and things like that? Are we looking at that, too?
You know, on something like, on the GPA and the 21 on the ACT, all that has to be, you know, has to go through the state government. You know, the state ed, Board of Ed, to petition to the state board, I mean, the State Department of Ed to petition the state board to waive that part. I think they are waiving a lot of that already.
Are they?
The 21 and things of that nature. They'll have to do, the same waivers that we put in for last year, we just re-upped them, right, and we reapplied. So we've addressed that part. Now, there will be some decisions, once the assessment, you know, we know we're going to assess. And Ms. Bratton was correct, eighty percent participation rate, and that's per school and collectively as a district. But also, there's going to be some decisions made in terms of if the kid assesss, how much are we going to make the assessment count? And there's going to be, there's going to be a range. I don't think we need to make it too dramatic, and you guys will be making the decision, we'll bring you a recommendation. I don't think it needs to be too large, but I think we do still need, if you want to get accountability, you still need to make sure that they are, that there's a purpose of why they're taking the assessment. Not for punitive purpose, but the opportunity for us to see where they are and opportunity for them to see where they are, you know. So my thing is, when we do bring this before to you, and keep in mind that they've got it all over the place, if it, if it benefits the child, you know, they can, they can take that. If it doesn't benefit the child, they don't have to take it. But I think in order for us, what, what the state's wanting to do with the assessment, other than the fact that it's 28 million dollars of assessment, I think it's 28 million, was it, 28 million? Is they want us to identify the gaps, and that's the whole purpose of the summer camps, that's the whole purpose of the summer school. The only part of it that I'm not real fond of is why are we waiting for 2022 and 2023 to do summer school if indeed that is a problem? So we'll see. Things can change very rapidly.
When are, when are we planning on testing? Is it going to be March, April?
Our, our.
Yes, our window is different for high school and elementary and middle. The high school window is April 12th through May 5th. And then the middle school window is, and elementary school window is April 21st through May 14th.
A lot of flexibility here because of the quarantine possibilities. And we actually have had some assessments. Our Holloway did theirs back in the fall. And they'll do another one, since they're on a four-by-four block.
Any other discussion? Mr. Lee, could you address Mr. Harris's question about the turning lane? Do we know anything?
You did.
Oh, did you? Okay, I'm sorry.
Did you have anything else?
The location of the residence, what their design was, now, typically, that would be on our own, not on their.
Okay.
But the design attempt was, or maybe 20 hours, maybe, or.
Thank you. All right, if nothing else, when's our next meeting, February the 2nd?
Members, I might have told some of you the executive session was canceled, but we will have a very brief executive session. So sorry if I dangled that carrot to you.
We will be going to executive session. All right, if nothing else, we are adjourned.